I'm saying if they already have residential development on them. Because we we put these in there to protect these lakes because they are important to our master plans. Now, yes, and some of them aren't owned privately, and then at that point, yes, they're like, but yeah, just to try to protect them. Because obviously, we're not making new ones. I mean, I guess I gotta check with the man upstairs to see if he's coming down and, you know, carving out new ones anytime soon, but I haven't gotten that memo. I just wanna make sure that the ones that we have, that, again, you know, I don't want to have happen what happened up in Brush County where they went from the center of the lake. Well, exactly, but it was open to interpretation, so.
That's a, that's a, that's a definite issue, and that's something I, you know, I'm quite honestly surprised that that would be applied that way there, so. Because what, it would be my opinion that it would be, you would take a reasonable rea- something is undefined in zoning where you accuse a reasonable reading of the zoning ordinance to determine from lakes, and I would, I would interpret that to be an edge of lakes, not center of lakes.
Well, yeah, well, and I would too, but again, apparently, they didn't think that, so that's why I'm bringing it up, because it was brought to my attention. Um, and as I was reading this, I'm like, oh, well, hey, I didn't realize that, and that's why I'm bringing it up for us to have a discussion, figure out if we wanna go back, table it, think about it, come back with some thoughts.
So if I were, if I were thinking of this, I would, one, trying to determine what are the lakes that have residential development on them right now? That's what I would think, that's what I, I would, I would think of it in a way like, like that, so I, I guess I'm trying to mesh Roger and Andy's statements together of residential development and. What, Andy, are you concerned with future residential development on lakes that do not have residential development?
That's correct.
Okay.
Again, some of them are privately owned, so we don't have control, I mean, so if somebody own, you know, Bob Smith owns all the way around one lake, he can develop it at any time he wants because he owns it. That's fine, but I don't wanna take away from their rights either, because again, that's their property, I'm just trying to protect everything that's already been established. And that's why we, I wanted to make sure we use language from our master.
Well, should we put in there then from the edge of lake instead of the center? And then also, we probably could ask if it's a participating member, they can do what they like, that's why they call state federal guidance. You know, 'cause that goes back to the property owner too, because now, if you're got a private lake, and you're setting a setback from that, and he owns it, aren't you infringing on his property rights?
Yeah, this is a very, this is, that's actually a very interesting thought, because, um, let's, if you have a setback waiver, well, I guess actually it would work. Because if there were more than one development on a lake, and so, let's say, if one person waived it, there would be, presumably their neighbors would be in violation of the setback. So you could have a situation where you have, you know, a hundred people on a lake, that one person waves and then you turn back very quick. Um, but, um, yes, I think, I think we could, I think that would probably be a good idea, especially for private lakes that are basically owned by one person.
I mean, because if they own all the way around, then maybe design here that says, hey, we wanna have it closer.
Yes.
That we're not holding township liable for any damage, whatever.
I think what we want to do is.
I think that's gonna be very, you know, miniscule, I mean, there's only a couple that, that is applicable to.
Well, and some of these have got so much wetland around them that, you're taking, again, and then, uh, are we infringing on other people's rights, you know? So we gotta think about that too, not only just the ones that don't want it, but we gotta think about those who want it. And it doesn't matter, we've gotta come up with a fair assessment of both sides.
You gotta be careful too, that is trying to step on the toes of the state or federal regulations.
We've got that, we can't supersede them.
Right, we've got in here that the state and federal guidelines. You know, one sign for the wetlands issue, Park Rider came on and said, you've got water standing in the spot for continuous forty-five to sixty days, it's a wetland. And there's times of flood, guys have lost two or three acres because they had a flood and it sat there, that'll go down, and they told them they couldn't farm anymore because they considered it a wetland. And it's the only time it's done in fifteen years, and they lost two or three acres because of it. So you gotta make sure it's actual wetland, not just something that somebody come up with and call it.
Yeah, so we'd have to call, we'd have to refer to it by statute, and I think on page six, we do refer to it by statute. Um, that's, that's, you know, the point I guess I was trying to make with wetlands, is wetlands get very complicated, and the definition of wetlands continues to change, so we do wanna refer to the statute, and then. Kind of actually on that note, they can become new, right, so those new wetlands can form, and then that, that causes issues when you have structural setbacks from wetlands, so I, I think we wanna think about, if, if we're me, thinking about this, I would think of, now, let's think about. One, ensuring state and federal compliance with wetlands that are not, maybe not by lakes, and then from lakes, how we either think about, maybe we do the simple setback to be greater than, than this, and by some amount. To cover the wetlands, uh, because when you think about zoning or zoning in, in general, you want to make the application, and I think you all agree on this, you want to make the application, and you can, to apply, and, you know. Or we could, and the other thing the township could always do is they could always ask a planner, you know, what would, what would you do? Because that's, you know, the plan, I know the plan isn't zoning from a legal perspective, from a appropriate planning perspective, and, you know, applying compliance of, you know, doing part three of three wetland permits, I don't do that a lot because that's not.
Well, they're gonna have to have a geological study on it anyway, they're gonna put a turbine on the wetlands, because we could put, uh, pylons down in the ground, and a hundred and fifty feet to make it sit on top.
Well, I guess then the simplest thing, because we, we already have the wetland provision, well then, I guess, my, like I said, I just wanna make sure that we define where the lakes are, so it's not from the center of the lake.
Yes, no.
A property not having a lake, yeah.
Watershed, I think a lot of watershed.
No, so, we will have public, I think the unfortunate reality is there's so many people here, if we have comments from the floor, I think. I don't, I'm happy to be here all night, I don't know if everybody else wants to be here all night, so.
Write your comments down, and address them with the comments.
And it's not the center of the lake.
Well, and that's what I was looking for, is the simplest wording so that it's not, so you don't have to be a child to understand it, that you're saying, hey, you're not crying, you're not gonna go from the center, you're gonna go from this determining portion, you know?
Kyle has suggested about adding a certain amount for the lake setback, you know, if we say, oh, it's every five feet from the lake's edge, this example. But if they're at the edge of a lake, we'll add another five feet, because floods and droughts will move that lake edge, so you need to kind of keep that in your account.
It's, it's interesting, um, this is sort of a, a side note, but another practice I do is, um, lake levels, so, I don't know how many of these would have established lake levels, so. You can look at, um, if they haven't established lake level, they, they should at least in normal times have similar, um, areas where the, where the lakes, where the water should be. But there are also, and this would be, you know, a little outside of the wheelhouse, but there would be also historic, I think the United States Geological Service has maps with ordinary high water marks on lakes, so that's where you can. You could, you could tie it to, like, it's essentially edge of the lake, and actually, this is a very good point, because this is what I didn't think of, you could tie it to the edge of the, like, the ordinary high water mark as defined by the U.S., I would have to do some research to make sure that we, we do that properly.
That's, that's all over the world, that's logical, you know?
Yeah, I mean, it's something logical, so if you could find a word for that, I would appreciate that.
Yep, yep, the thing I like about it, it's logical, then it's also, um, it's subjective.
Now, what about putting in for a participating landowner for the private lakes? Is there something to add, would be put in there for that?
If, do we agree on the waiver for that, if someone, let's say someone, and, um, one of these, and I don't know all of these lakes, let's say one of these lakes is essentially, someone owns fifty acres and they have a lake in their backyard, and they, they wanna waive that, do we have consensus that they could waive a setback?
Yeah, like about, well, we're, yes, yes.
I can, I can add that too. Okay, so that is our lake setbacks, public road setbacks, those don't stay the same, whether four hundred feet or one and a half ti- or one and a half times tip height. Railroads and rail, road, rails, rails to trails, four hundred feet or one and a half times tip height, so that does stay the same. Okay, we talked about lakes, that was next on our list, noise, we, we had forty-five DVA at property lines, property lines, non-participating lots, or fifty-five DVA at occupied buildings that are basically not unparticipating lots. Uh, sound pressure, maybe, and then basically, there's the ambient factor of, um, if there's like a, you know, storm event or something, that. Not, they can't exceed, there's a very small exceedance amount they can, they can have for a temporary period of time, that's five dozen. Um, going to road repair, that is page six, this is something that we wanted to spell out, transportation plan. So this basically, this is very important, I think, uh, if there were to be ever a project that, um, basically a developer would have to have a, a financial security with likely a mock, kind of road commission related to damage of, of roads. Um, that would, that would allow it to basically fix, uh, based on damage from construction. How I've seen this in other jurisdictions, when there have been projects, is, uh, the road commission would do a evaluation of the roads in the township, uh, then, project would happen, and then afterwards, there would be an evaluation of what happened. And if there were to be repairs, they would occur. Now I won't go, I'm gonna switch gears to my email that I saw. My elders, remove all components, so, the, the draft has removed all components at six feet versus four feet, I've seen it both ways in zoning ordinances, I don't know if it, you know, I, I think I lack probably the perfect data expertise, if I wish it better. Or, or what, what is feasible for a developer, but not useful for a developer, I will say I have seen six feet in other ordinances. Okay, I did make a variety of, um, definition changes, I'll, I'll summarize those briefly, changed occupied buildings to basically clearly state that those are buildings not used by people. I made a definition of utility wind turbine to, it, it was confusing, at least in my opinion, what was a wind turbine? The, the, the model would use turbine, it would use wax, I think it was sometimes using wax when it's supposed to use turbine, turbine was sometimes lower pace and it wasn't defined, so I kinda, I tried to just fix that. Wind energy facility, so, wind energy system is defined in your zoning ordinance to basically mean a, if existing zoning ordinance to mean a personal turbine, so let's say you have a farm and you had your own turbine. That would be defined as a wind energy system, that was defined in this model, so I changed a few definitions that related to that, wind energy facility generally means wind project, so, multiple turbines, um, the collection line, there's a substation. You want to have, that would be the special use, if I, if I go back to. Going to page two, at the very bottom nineteen, wind energy facility, that would be the special use in the zoning district, so it would refer, it's kind of like wind project would be a better term for it. So the original ordinance, it, it had two definitions that basically referred to that, I think one was aversion, that talks to, it was a modification of wax, and I can't remember off the top of my head what it was, but I, I changed it to, to do that. Wind energy conversion system, wax, so I did use a wax definition, but I repurposed it to essentially mean a single wind turbine with all of its electrical equipment. That is, um, I think it's in the context of this ordinance, it's used in deconditioning, so, um, to make sure that, you know, individual, you wanna refer to, that is, you know, you wanna refer to everything versus just a turbine, if the understanding's clear. Then we did a, a variety of moving around of things that are already in there, I won't mention that. Um, I did add some things, I front-loaded, uh, application materials that relate to organ standards. So, um, when you have organ standards such as a shadow flicker standard or a noise standard, um, you know, you have, you, you can have an ordinance that basically just says it's the, that's the, the standard. Um, what I did in the application materials is basically that it would require an applicant to make it so, uh, the township could evaluate whether the standards would be met from an application, provide some sort of report for. Kind of like preliminary analysis of what the shadow flicker and what the sound would be at, uh, from, from their proposed project. That, that wasn't in the, in the model, I, I will say, in projects that I have been involved in, that type of material is almost always, otherwise you have no idea, you know, what, with, whether they would meet your ordinance standards or not, so. But I did wanna make that, I did want to make that clear. Um, I also, this is something that has come up in, in my experience, I, I, in the application materials, page six, deconditioning analysis, we wanted a document that would help, you know. Township has the ability to hire third-party experts to evaluate deconditioning costs, but you would also, I think, want help at least a preliminary, you know, from a initial standpoint of the developer telling you how much they anticipate the, the deconditioning cost to be within eight miles of the. Uh, there was a, a term of six turbines in the township limitation, so, I removed that, and the reason why I moved that, removed that is, uh, a legal, it's, it's a legal issue, and, uh, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act generally allows you to. Regulate zoning districts and the uses of appropriate uses of land, and that's sort of, you know, you have some, some of these objective standards, noise, uh, setbacks, it's not, uh, you don't have authority to limit. Use of the typical uses, and, and the, I, I want to, I'm doing that of more or less protecting the town, you don't wanna get lawsuit basically over that issue. The, the fact of the matter is, when you evaluate, especially with land use permit, there are a variety of discretionary, uh, discretionary standards, so you can determine how many turbines you think are appropriate based on particular projects. Uh, so you can do that basic, you can accomplish the same, I wouldn't come in and say, I, I am only, you know, we're going back to, but I wouldn't come back to saying, I will only accept blah, blah, blah turbines in your head, but I would, I would say, I would look at individual projects, and I would say, this appears that there would be too many. Personal turbines, this is, I believe I handed out the section related to.
Can we skip back to the application stuff, I wanted, I can, something in, another one that I liked the wording of adequate review time.
What is it called?
Adequate review time.
Okay.
About making sure that they submit all the application materials at least thirty days prior before the planning commission meeting.
Yes.
Um, so that everybody has time to review all the materials, and if the, um, so, because in that way, um, if we, how's it saying here? Uh, to require the applicant to provide additional or supplemental information or documents at any time. And it says that way, it says in here that the planning commission and township are not obligated to consider any material that is not timely submitted. So basically giving them a timeline that if you want to do this, you need to have your proof of group and have it all to us at a time.
If you could, Andy, if you could send me that, I think, well, I'd like the planning commission to hire Todd somehow, I think that's relatively.
This is, this is out of another townships, it's not in ours, and that's why I thought that's something that, as we're seeing that, like, you know, we don't have anything to address, a timeline to get all these materials to us. Um, so that we have ample time to review them, um, and that's, I just thought that that's something, you know, we all have thing, you know, we all wanna have time to go look through everything, and make sure that we're making a very. Sound decision.
Yes, and I, so, if I were advising, if I were independently advising the township, uh, and you had an application, and you believed it was incomplete, I would basically say, we're not, we're not letting meetings, so we get the doctor's one. But I think it's actually, it is helpful to spell that out in the ordinance too, so the first thing I wanna do is to check our, I don't have your entire ordinance in front of me, and I don't wanna come on your computer, but, uh. Whether the special land use permit and, or site plan section talks about supplemental materials, to see if that is in the, because they would have to apply to that. But then, if it's not, it's, I think, Andy, it would be helpful if you could send me the language, and I can elaborate it here, or we could actually do it for all special land use.
Or if we have to, and then we'd have to do like an article, something like that.
Possible, yeah, that we, we, what you're saying, Paul, is to look at the special land use permit in general.
Yeah, I think, I think you want it for any project you have, uh, presumption of that, you won't consider it basically incomplete application. And that's sometime, that's actually sometimes the, um, easier way to get around that, is you do it in the reverse, you regulate in the reverse, and you say incomplete applications will not be considered, and it's very simple, and then you have the discretion. Of course, you can't be disingenuous with that, and you continue to say someone's application is incomplete, you know, it's, yeah, but that's, that's a draw.
I was talking about that, um, on page five, where complaint resolution plan, it says something about, uh, detail, content, information publicly available for the lakes. I'm sure there's other things through here that I haven't spotted yet, I think that we should have some place in here that it should be stated exactly how these things are made public, and when, and give them a timeline. Because two or three days for information and not even knowing where to find it, that's unacceptable, but if it's something that can be put out there that, you know, you'll find it at this website by such and such day, or, but, something, I don't know how to word it, what you give under me?
So, how, how do we address that? I'll tell, I'll tell you, you can do it the way that you're proposing, or how we, I have seen it addressed for that, for those particular standards, so this, remember, this is an application requirement, that they would have to establish a plan, basically, and with broader terms, how they would make information brought, uh, publicly available. You would have the discretion as the planning commission, and then ultimately, I believe, uh, you would have the discretion of the planning commission to review that plan and determine whether their methods of making it publicly available are acceptable. If not, you would be able to impose a condition, a reasonable condition, to say, okay, this is your complaint resolution plan, but you need to post it online, you need to do this, do that, and the reason, this goes back to my, I think something that I was bringing up earlier. Sometimes being broad with standards is helpful because it gives the township discretion, and then also, I, I, I continue to say that the future proofs your organs, because if you lock in the, you can, I've seen some ordinances that will, you know, they'll lock in some outdated.
I think it's in here, because it's, uh, if we go down with, uh, the blank resolution plan, the complaint resolution process, we, you use an independent media, we could work on it later, and shall include a time limit for acting on the complaint.
I think the concern, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, is, um, how they would make the complaint resolution plan available, but not how, but not necessarily how they would act on it, is that correct, or is that not correct?
Yeah, how, how they would make it available so that they can put that if they want to sort of be aware of it.
So we could do that two ways, one way is you could spell out, you want complaint resolution plan that's publicly available on a maintained website, um, a sign, or some physical location, um, and papers at the township hall, to do it that way. Or we could do it in the way of leaving the language broad and get a plan from the developer, and you would determine whether that's sufficient or not, and if it's not, you would request them to do additional things.
Don't get already there, and our, like, our resolutions and stuff are, like, for the board itself, is that like fifteen days after like our resolution or something, uh, to publicize it and like the public paper, that's gotta be brought up to the public?
So that would necessarily be for this, so if you grant a special use permit, or the township grants a special use permit, but the fine exception, the township board, uh, the special use permits here, is, um, the, that doesn't get published, right? So there's a public hearing that does get published, you have a public hearing, um, and then there's a vote on the ultimate permit, and then there's a site plan meeting, and approval doesn't get published, that the document that would specify the terms of the approval would be a public document, it's subject to the, the public reviewing, but there's not, there's not really, you wouldn't really know if the complaint res- it, it doesn't really, that wouldn't exist to spell out where the complaint resolution plan is.
Because I was pretty sure that when I got, uh, changed up there on my zoning, we had to, uh, put it in the paper.
Yes, a rezoning requires publication.
Well, but it was a special land use.
A special land use requires publication for a public hearing.
I think what Ann, no, what Ann's wanting to know is how the public would figure out what the complaint, where, where is, if they have a complaint, how are they gonna know what the steps are? Where, where are they gonna find this complaint plan, and that's what she's wanting to know, is if we, if they put a plan in place, where is it gonna be located? Is it gonna be only in the township hall, do they have to call the clerk to get a copy of it, will it be on a website, that's what she's.
Oh, besides that, this one has two cities, you have Coral, you have Trucon, I don't know Coral except for this, you know, how am I supposed to know there's something on, I don't think it's.
When, when the, on our township, what they, they have the form for this complaint, for.
So it'd be something separate.
Yeah, it'd be something similar, that's what I've seen townships, when they do have a website, they like to put these complaints, uh, forms on their website, they will generally have them at township hall, um, this is interesting with Coral and Trucon, um, so. If it, if it were me advising the planning officials, I would leave it broad, and then you can tailor it to an individual project, because that means you do some of the things that the annual ones do, is, you know, let's, let's talk to the developer and say, let's, let's have copies of this available in Coral and Trucon, because people don't test, some people don't use computers. So they're not gonna be able to find it, they might, they might not wanna drive here, they may, may have no clue, um, you know, so that's, that's how I would do it, I would evaluate it in case.
So, great song, I guess, there. Excellent.
Seventeen months.
Prove that then. And then we go back over.
I'm here for two, I don't, I don't, I don't, no.
To write it in, that's what I'm thinking, you know, if I get up here and, some, close, close, right, you.
I think the magic word is a maintained website.
That would be nice.
But I think you're right, I mean, I don't think we need to necessarily put it in here, but, but we need to make sure that it is up on the website, like I said, keep it broad, right out, we can always go back and change it, we get something different.
Yeah, if you see a complaint resolution, this is, you know, matter of fact, speaking of, if you get a complaint resolution plan that you don't believe is acceptable, then you can add conditions, say, yeah, you wanna. Unless you're being totally unreasonable, saying, maybe at every street corner.
All right, where were we at? Personal turbine.
Personal tur- so, this is, um, so if you look at, and I can't remember if I wrote that, if you go to page twelve, there is wax for onsite service only, this comes from the, uh, original wind ordinance considered by the township that would regulate what I would say is a personal turbine, so if you have a farm, you have one turbine. That is already in your zoning ordinance under section three oh six B, that allows personal turbines as accessory buildings, so not special use, uh, as long as, uh, on agricultural, on single family property, as long as they're a hundred seventy feet tall, among other things. Did at one point have the section printed in how, but my question there is whether we want to adjust that?
Was this page four and five, that was?
Yeah.
Yes.
That one straight page?
Yes, that one straight page, so these are your current regulations, anybody right now could ask for it, could get an accessory building, if they have, basically build a turbine as an accessory structure, and they know all these. So the only reason I add this is, you should, if you don't believe, if you think some of these are not. Right, then you should change them. Right, then you should change those.
I thought we was dead away with that at the beginning.
That was, that was, that didn't really apply.
This is all we got now, right, like twenty-six. And this is what, this is kind of counter to personal where you're, what we've got here.
So what you did, Kyle, is on this highlighted portion, you did, you condensed it.
I could, I removed some things that were duplicative, but I would recommend you totally, because this is already defined in your zoning ordinance, I would recommend a reading that from this amendment, and then, and then if you would like to amend these provisions, we should talk about that now.
Okay.
Because I, I, it doesn't, I think it would make more sense, more sense to amend this provision of the zoning ordinance, especially because it appears that these are accessory uses, and we're, we're amending a section that relates to special uses, um.
So what you're saying is this part right here that you've highlighted, that you don't want that within this part, or?
I would, I would completely delete that because it's duplicative of, of this, it's regulating the same conduct.
See, and I didn't realize that this was in addition to what was already in there.
Yeah, well, I, the problem is, I don't think it's anybody, the, the problem is it came from a template ordinance, where those communities I do not believe had another ordinance provision that regulated the same thing. So then sometimes you, the, the issues you have when you use examples. And I only caught it because I was, I was looking at wind energy system, and for whatever reason, I, I, you can whatever do, control F in your zoning ordinance, define five words, and then I typed in winds, and then I started to see a whole section, I'm like.
So basically, we just need to, this part that he highlighted, we just need to delete that because it's already in our ordinance, it's already.
Right. Section three oh six. And then if we want to go over to some of this, it's, uh, well, actually, it is. You wanna allow under seventy foot winter line into your, in your mobile yard?
Yeah, this, so my initial impressions on this are the sound standards are.
I think they should meet what we already.
Yeah, they, they should be.
They shouldn't exceed what we're.
Yeah, that's, that, that would be, that would be a differentiation of what you're, you're doing. They are pretty tall, so I've seen ordinances like this where they limit them to, oh, like a hundred feet. I would have to do some independent research in terms of, I don't, I don't see a lot of those ordinance amendments that relate to, um, what are called personal turbines, but that, you know, people don't necessarily ask for that, so I don't know how, how much they are usually for, how probably they're getting for a farm.
And, you know, the one times height, and that's getting kind of lax there, right? If you can go, a personal turbine that uses only a lot of one times height, the.
I think we need to make it add up with what we already have changed.
Right, so we should address some of the issues in there.
So I would, and I were the governor, if I were, something I.